It's time for us to check back in with the thread that runs so true. If you missed any of the previous readings, just look in the description below for a playlist. Something had to be done about our financial situation. The rural schools had already begun. There were approximately a hundred rural school teachers at work now. At the end of their first month, they would want their meager but much-needed pay. Not any rural salary was under forty-eight dollars and seventy cents, and not any was more than seventy-nine dollars and eighty cents per month. The two rural teachers who made seventy-nine dollars and eighty cents per month had college degrees and four years or more of teaching experience. Other salaries ranged somewhere between these figures. The majority portion of the salaries was around sixty-five dollars per month, and at the end of the first month's teaching, we were supposed to pay these salaries. I read every book concerning finance I could find. I didn't know how to handle other people's money. I'd never handled much money. Since I was practically sure that my board members had handled less, I thought one of us would have to learn. I thought this person ought to be me. I wanted to know it anyway. There wasn't anything about my duties I wasn't willing to learn, but I couldn't learn enough from the books I was reading. Perhaps they were not the right kind. I had to do some thinking. I had to find the way. Then the thought came to me that there were many small but successful businessmen in Greenwood County. I reasoned if county businessmen could be successful for themselves, why couldn't they give sound advice to me and my Board of Education, whose backs were now against the wall? But we could not have them unless we could get their services for free. When I asked Joe Terrill, Charles Angus, John Roberts, and James Melvin if they would meet with us in a financial advisory capacity without pay, each man felt flattered. It was the first time that local businessmen had been called in to give financial advice to the schools. There was only one thing I requested of them. That was the same thing I had requested of my board members: not to spread the news of our impending financial crisis to the public. I thought if this news got around, it would hurt the little credit that we had. When we let these businessmen see the auditor's report, know the amount of our anticipated revenue for the year, they came to one conclusion: We would have to borrow money. We would have to make new debts to pay old debts. We would have to find some place to cut expenses. I knew this couldn't be my salary, for it had been cut before I took office. I was making as little as the state would allow a superintendent of county schools to receive: one hundred dollars per month, and I wasn't allowed any expense account. Joe Terrill agreed to go with me to find credit for Greenwood County schools. First, we contacted Lansbury National Bank. Instead of extending us more credit, they asked that we pay what we owed. Then we tried three banks in Auckland. Each banker asked us what collateral we could give for security. We couldn't offer Maxwell High School building, for it wasn't paid for. We didn't find a banker that wanted a schoolhouse anyway. What would he do with it if we couldn't pay back the borrowed money? We couldn't offer him our school buses for security, for we had only four, and they were old. We hadn't anything to offer but our promises to pay from future revenue. We tried three banks in West Virginia, and they asked us if we had tried to borrow from Kentucky banks. We tried the First National in Dartmouth, Ohio. Everywhere, it was the same story. Promised to pay collateral was to bankers equivalent to the wind. We were as far from our solution as ever. We hadn't solved anything. Since we couldn't find credit anywhere, and since we owed twenty-six thousand dollars at the Lansbury National Bank that would be taken from our local tax money, this is what we did to save us temporarily. In Kentucky, half of the local tax money is added to the state appropriations, the county share of per capita money, to make up the salaries of the teachers. It was against the state laws to use this money for anything but teacher salaries. The other half of the local revenue went to pay the county school superintendent, janitors, county school board members, bus drivers, upkeep and maintenance of school buses, maintenance of eighty-two rural school buildings, and Maxwell High School. When we paid the twenty-six thousand to Lansbury National Bank, an obligation we were forced to meet, there would be little if anything left of our local tax money except the half that was used for teacher's salaries. I suggested to my school board that we loan the school buses to the drivers, let them furnish the gas, and take responsibility for repairs, and let the high school pupils pay a reasonable amount each month for transportation. The bus drivers would not get as good salaries as they had gotten, nor would the pupils get free transportation, but since we were in a position where we couldn't run the buses at all, it was better to do this so the county pupils, who lived long distances away, could still go to high school. Only two of my board members, Benton Dangerfield and Manley Warburton, were responsive to this idea. Mooner Bentworth was against my idea. William Dawson didn't express his opinion. I thought he would vote with Tobias Claxton and Mooner Bentworth, but he immediately came over to my side. My suggestion carried by a vote of three to two. This relieved us of the expensive transportation system. Our solution of the bus problem was used by two of my successors. Then I proposed we cut one month from all the schools in Greenwood County. This would reduce all the rural schools to six months, and Maxwell High School from nine months to eight. I could not understand why high schools should have nine months when the rural schools only got six and seven. For according to statistics, only a small percentage of the pupils from the rural schools go to high school. Only a small percent of these pupils finish high school. It seemed to me that the rural schools and the graded schools were the underpinning of the whole public school system. So why shouldn't the public school tax money, paid by the people, be used for the greatest good for the greatest number of their children? I was amazed that members of my school board, without a dissenting vote, agreed to slice a month from every county school. I wondered if the Kentucky State Department would let us do this. If not, I planned to ask them to show us a way to solve our financial crisis. With the approval of my county school board, I started to remake our budget. The budget I had inherited from my predecessor had been made for an anticipated revenue we would not receive. We could not raise taxation. The state law didn't permit us to do this. In the state of Kentucky, cities and counties were governed by dual taxation laws. The maximum school taxation on property valuation of the county rural districts was seventy-five cents per one hundred dollar valuation. The maximum school taxation in the city independent districts, where there were greater concentration of wealth, was a dollar fifty per one hundred valuation. We had two school systems. We had the poor and the poorer systems. We had this great discrimination shown between the rural and city pupils of Kentucky. This discrimination made me madder than the corn laws of Great Britain could have made Thomas Carlyle. And like Carlyle, I decided to do something about it as soon as I had finished with the emergency work in my office. That emergency work was to make a new school budget. Joseph Terrill, Margaret Raridan, my secretary, Chad Hoskins, our auditor, helped me make the new budget. We finally agreed, since we couldn't borrow money, couldn't raise taxes, that we would make our budget with the money left us and spend within this budget. This suggestion was approved by members of the school board. In a few days, we had made the new budget for six-months school instead of seven. Since this was contrary to the school laws of the state, members of my school board approved it reluctantly. They didn't think it would be approved by the State Department of Education. Instead of posting the budget to Frankfurt, I asked my school board for expense money to take me and the auditor to Frankfurt. They voted me twenty-five dollars. Then the owner of a garage we owed a big account for operation of last year's school buses loaned us a car. Auditor Chad Hoskins drove us to Frankfurt, where we stayed at the YMCA because the rooms were cheaper. We ate at restaurants where food was quantity and not quality. I presented my new budget to the State Department of Education. On a few minor items, members of this department were generous enough with their time to help me make changes. We stayed in Frankfurt two days. I got a personal interview with James Richman, state superintendent of schools, and explained to him what we were up against. My auditor showed him facts and figures. Our budget was approved. We knew then that our per capita money, money that would go to pay everything but teachers, would soon be on the way. This was a great relief. We had weathered the first storm. I went back to Lansbury rejoicing. Margaret Raridan issued checks to one hundred rural teachers, checks that were long overdue, since these teachers had began teaching in July. When I reported the success of our budget to members of the Greenwood County Board of Education, four of them applauded, but Mooner Bentworth didn't. He sat motionless, looking straight at me. There was fire dancing in his ferret-colored eyes. Then he arose to his feet. "I make a motion to members of this Board of Education that we impeach Jesse Stewart for embezzlement," he shouted. Then he pointed at me and said, "You are leading us straight to hell." "He's leading us out of a muddle," Manley Warburton shouted, jumping to his feet. "And you, Mooner Bentworth, helped get us in that muddle." "When did I embezzle county funds?" I asked, almost too stunned to speak. "That twenty-five dollars expense money to go to Frankfurt," he shouted. "Expenses of two men, meals and rooms for two days and nights, and expenses of a car for three hundred and sixty miles," I said. "We spent the last quarter to have the carburetor cleaned. We coasted over the last hill home." A gentleman, said Benton Dangerfield, rising to his feet and opening his mouth for the first time at the board meeting. "I make a motion that we have Mooner Bentworth removed as chairman of the Greenwood County Board of Education. I have enough evidence here in my pocket to remove him from the board if we want to go to the law to do it." Last summer, he said, as everybody became breathlessly quiet, he used the county school bus for a touring car, drove it to the head of Big Sandy River to see a baseball game. He charged gasoline and repairs to Greenwood County Board of Education. "I have the evidence here in my pocket. I got it this morning," he said, as he brought his big hand from his coat pocket filled with duplicate copies of unpaid bills. "I want you to look at these." "Another thing," he continued. While the board members looked at these unpaid bills with amazement, "Mooner Bentworth is not fit to be chairman of the Greenwood County School Board. He takes his orders before he comes to a meeting. Is that right, Mooner Bentworth?" When Benton Dangerfield made this accusation, Dawson, Claxton, and Warburton stopped reading the bills. Mooner Bentworth sat motionless and stared at the wall. He didn't answer Benton Dangerfield's accusations. "I watched you this morning with my own eyes," Benton accused. "I thought this was going on. I wanted to be sure. Do you want to tell your superintendent and fellow board members where you went early this morning? Do you want to tell them where you go to get your orders before each meeting?" Benton waited for Mooner to answer his accusation. "Gentlemen, I think the Greenwood County Board of Education and the superintendent of Greenwood County Schools are plenty capable of running this county's school business," Benton said. "I move that we remove Mooner Bentworth as chairman of the Greenwood County Board of Education." "I second that motion," Manley Warburton said. There were four votes cast against Mooner. Tobias Claxton was chosen for the new chairman of the Greenwood County Board of Education. We did not bring court proceedings against Mooner Bentworth, but allowed him to remain as a member of the Greenwood County Board of Education, since he had only one year to serve before his time expired. If we had brought court proceedings against him, it might have taken us a long time to oust him. It might have been better if we had. Far from this time forward, Mooner Bentworth and Benton Dangerfield never spoke again to each other. Not as long as I was superintendent of Greenwood County schools. They were not without guns either. Often, one could see a pistol handle showing from their pockets. We never knew when we attended a board meeting who would come out alive or who would be left dead. One morning, when I arrived at my office, two groups of well-dressed people were waiting to see me. The groups were standing at opposite ends of the courthouse corridor. Before I reached my office door, a man from each group rushed toward me. Each man introduced himself. One was Fred Harrison, a trustee from Samaria Rural School District. Rodney Norton, representative of the second group, was a little disappointed when I agreed to see Fred Harrison and his crowd first. I invited both groups inside my office. I met not only the leaders of each group, but everyone who had come as a representative of these fighting clans. John Harrison, brother to Fred, was with the Rodney Norton clan. He was fighting his own brother Fred now, as he had fought him in the district trustee election. "Mr. Stewart, I want to explain the whole situation to you," Fred Harrison began. "We had a hotly contested election at Samaria, and I beat Rodney Norton by three votes." "You mean you stole it?" Rodney shouted, his temper rising. "Now just a minute, Mr. Norton," I said. "You let Fred Harrison tell his story, then I'll listen to you. Go ahead with your story, Mr. Harrison." "Mr. Norton and I belong to different churches," Fred Harrison continued. "He belongs to the holiness, and I belong to the Christian. And his church house is very close to the Samaria school. At night, they made great disturbances, shouting and carrying on over there. And I don't say that members of their church did this, but I saw cars parked around the schoolhouse, and the next morning, I had to pick up the empty bottles lying on the playground. Many were broken. Last year, Seif Benton's boy lost an eye when he fell on a piece of broken glass. So I put up a row of posts to keep the cars off the schoolyard. Then Mr. Norton came to me, saying I was against his church, and asked me to remove the post. I didn't remove them, but one dark night, somebody else did. Then," Fred Harrison shouted, "I put posts down they couldn't dig up. I put steel rods through the ends that I set in the ground. They can't get 'em up now. But here's what Rodney Norton and my brother John did. They got up a petition against the teacher I hired. They had accused me of going to the schoolhouse and kissing the teacher in front of the pupils. And look at the signers we have on this petition to oust Ollie Knuckles from that school," Rodney Norton shouted. "Look at the witnesses we've got here. Their names in black and white, who did see Fred Harrison, who stole the trustee election from me, kissing the teacher. He was not qualified to recommend because he stole that election." "That's the truth," John Harrison echoed. "Now listen," Mr. Norton, I pleaded, for I was afraid the two groups were going after each other in my office. "You let me get through with Mr. Harrison. If you can't agree to this, I'm gonna have to ask you and your group to leave my office until I am through hearing his story." My secretary, Margaret Raridan, was the only other person beside myself and these two groups in the office. There would have been little we could do if a free-for-all had started. Ms. Raridan sat by the telephone, ready to call the sheriff if a riot broke out. She had seen these things happen many times before. "Ms. Ollie Knuckles is a fine teacher, Mr. Stewart," Fred Harrison bragged. "She's one of the best." "Yet they," he pointed toward Rodney Norton's group, whose faces were flushed and whose tempers were rising every minute while they waited and listened, "have tried to stir up a scandal. I have come to you to see what can be done about this trouble. This is my story." "All right, Mr. Norton. Will you come forward?" I said. "Yes, sir. Gladly will I come," he said, as he took long strides across my office with a petition in one hand and a long list of witnesses' signatures in the other. "I am bringing these to you, Mr. Stewart," he said, giving me the petition and list of witnesses. "I want you to look these over. We want action immediately. We want this Ollie Knuckles ousted from Samaria School. We can't have all this love a-going on between her and her so-called trustee in front of the innocent little girls and boys." "This petition is very interesting reading," I said, as I turned the pages. "But, Mr. Stewart," Rodney Norton said, "I want to go back to the election. Fred Harrison voted men and women not eligible to vote. I've got the proof." "Didn't the election officers challenge them?" I asked. "The election officers were Fred Harrison's friends," Rodney explained. "They belonged to his church." "I can't do anything about your election," I said. "This is not for me to decide. You'll have to see your lawyer." Every day since I've been in office, district school trustees had come to see me about their problems. They took most of my time, and they kept the thriving Lansbury lawyers busy. Another trustee spent a half a day telling me how the outdoor privy had fallen in on the teacher. And this day, I had the same sort of a rumpus. I was not gonna spend my entire day trying to be a peaceful mediator between these warlike clans. "If Fred Harrison can swear I took the posts from around the schoolhouse," Rodney shouted, shaking his fist at Fred. "I'll let him do it on the witness stand. He put them posts there for spite. I know that the people of Samaria Holiness Church didn't park their cars around the schoolhouse and drink whiskey and leave empty bottles and broken glass, brother," Rodney shouted, with dry cotton spittle flying from his mouth. "Members of our church don't do business that-a-way." "Bless Jesus, we've never done that sort of thing yet. But, Mr. Stewart," Rodney said, his voice getting softer, "let me ask you if Fred Harrison has the right to put posts on the school property. Don't the members of the school board have to give him permission? Do the district school trustees have more power than the Greenwood County Board of Education?" "Mr. Norton, I'm afraid they have," I said. "They have in regard to hiring school teachers. About setting posts on the school grounds, I don't know." "I'll take it to court," he shouted. "We'll see if Fred Harrison has the right." "I'm ready to take it to court," Fred Harrison said. "I've already got my lawyers." "This is something that the superintendent can't settle," I said. "It's not in my power." "The courts are too slow," said a big man of the Rodney Norton faction, who wore a big black umbrella hat he never removed in the office. "We demand action," he said with a slow, soft drawl, as he looked at me with his slanting, black, beady eyes and twirled the long horn of his black handlebar mustache with one hand. "I've done all I can do with this situation," I said. "You'll have to demand action from your lawyers." "That's what we'll do," said Rodney Norton, the little sparrow-like man who was the militant leader of his clan. "Mr. Norton, do you have another copy of this petition?" I asked him. "No, you have the only copy," he said. "May I keep this petition?" I asked. "That's why I brought it along," he said. "I want you to read it." Ms. Raridan escorted Fred Harrison and his group through the office door first. Then she very politely escorted Rodney Norton, who wanted to talk on and tell us what a terrible man Fred Harrison was out the door. The last man from the office was the man with the big black mustache with the slanting, black, beady eyes and the big, black umbrella hat. This situation ended in court. How many suits were brought into court? How many lawyers were hired? I never knew. I do know that Rodney Norton and his following didn't oust Ollie Knuckles from the Samaria school. As to the posts around the schoolyard, the courts didn't give fast enough action. Less than a month later, Alvin Barker, the big man with the beady, black eyes, with the black handlebar mustache and the big, black umbrella hat, was found by Fred Harrison lying beside these posts at daybreak in a downpour of autumn rain. He had been possum hunting, and he had a coffee sack with a little possum in it. The moonshine jug was half-empty. He had blown out two of the posts with dynamite. But the third post, something had happened. It was partly blown out. Beside it lay Alvin Barker, with his right hand almost blown away, his right arm mangled, the right wing of his handlebar mustache nipped as clean as if it had been done with a pair of scissors, and his right eye gone. He had almost bled to death. He was rushed to a hospital, where he wasn't given any chance to live. When I chose not to be rehired for Greenwood County School Superintendent many months later, Fred Harrison and his clan were waiting for Alvin Barker to return from the hospital, so he could be summoned before the Greenwood County Grand Jury to tell who furnished him whiskey on the night he had gone possum hunting, who furnished him dynamite to blow out the post, who was behind the whole thing. The fight was still carried on. It hadn't ended, nor would it end for years to come. My goodness, what a... What a crazy turn of events for Jesse in this part of the book. Definitely, he's in a mess. We said that last week, that he was in a real mess. Well, now he's... 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 Seems like every day, he finds out the mess is bigger than he thought. And we even found out at the very beginning what he gets paid. So he gets paid a hundred dollars a month to put up with all that mess. So that doesn't seem very... Very right or very worth it in any regards, very worth it. I halfway expected for him not to get paid anything, since they're in such a financial hardship. You know, they're so... They're broke. And they can't even pay their teachers. So I halfway expected it to be that Jesse wouldn't make no money either, but he's getting paid a hundred dollars a month. Now, he was really smart in the beginning. He tried to read the books and all that, and that just wasn't really helping him. But then to think about the people he knew who were businessmen, who had experience, if he could get them to advise them, of course, for free... But so often in life, you know, whatever it is you're doing, you know, I'm a... I believe in education and all that, but so often, like if you're learning... Like myself, for instance, when I learned about websites and stuff in college and when I was learning how to build websites and stuff, I made good grades, but I didn't fully understand it until I had to do it myself. And there was no teacher around to ask. There was nobody, you know, the ins and outs of editing a website and things like that. I really had to just do it myself and have experience. So in that same way, Jesse went to those people that had experience. He went to those local businessmen and got them to come advise them. Well, of course, they wanted them to... Said you should just borrow money. You're gonna have to borrow money to get ahead, but then no bank would borrow... Would loan them any money, so they couldn't borrow money. And who could blame the banks? They were in that kind of position. They had no collateral. All they had was their promises, but they already owed a bunch of money that they hadn't been able to pay back. So you can understand why none of the banks wanted to help them. Interesting, though, that Jesse thought of doing that. And I wonder if it was because... I mean, lots of people could have thought of that. Not that Jesse was Mr. Perfect or anything. But he kinda come from that background, where if you wanna figure out how to do something, you gotta go to the person that knows how to do it and just ask them. Ask them. He was a big believer, in other words, of experience, I think. And even... He was pretty smart, you know, to come up with the bus solution, that that would save them some money. And that seems kind of drastic, but in that situation, it was... It was. Like he said, they were up against the wall. They had to figure out how to do something. So by turning the buses over to the men or the bus drivers there, letting them be responsible for buying the gas, making the repairs, but also getting any kind of money that the students paid, you know, that at least was a solution, so they didn't have to worry. That was one expense they didn't have to worry about. And I thought it was interesting, when he goes to the state superintendent, he convinces him, you know, I guess he kinda went in there knowing they might push back on his budget and on especially the reducing school by one month. But he had brought the auditor with him, so they had all the facts and was like, "Here you go." And the superintendent was probably like, "That's about all you can do." Because I don't... You know, probably the state of Kentucky can't just give you a bunch of money. So yeah, that's... You're just gonna have to make do. That's probably... Probably the best that you could do. And then, of course, the dramatic, exciting meeting there with his school board when he went back, and Mooner jumping up and accusing him of stealing, embezzling money because he had took the... Twenty-five dollars as an expense for two people to travel all that way and stay two days, and... What a dramatic turn of events, which Mooner kind of... It's interesting. He was the one that first walked up to Jesse there, when he was under the tree, and told him they wanted him, you know, wanted to hire him. But pretty quickly, it seems like he turned against Jesse. And then when Benton Dangerfield starts saying, "I've got the proof," you know, that he done these things, and then also that he gets his walking orders, his orders from somebody else. They never... He never tells who that was. You wonder, was it Larry Anderson? Was it just the Lansbury School District now? Was it somebody else over there, whoever was managing it or something? I don't know who it was, because it doesn't really say, but... Dramatic turn of events there, very exciting. You can just see when Benton Dangerfield announced that he had that evidence and told what Benton... What Mooner had done. And Jesse says it got real quiet. You can just see those other men, just like, "What? What's going on? What's happening?" You know? So that would have been very exciting. And then even to the point that they never got over it, and then they carried guns. Can you imagine? Like you could see their pistols. So that had to be really... Every meeting after that, you know, was very, very exciting. Even if nothing else had happened, that part would have kept it very exciting. And then... Wow, the ending, the drama between the trustees and the family and the churches and all that got mixed up together and... You know, really, my goodness, what a mess. But Jesse was smart in that. He didn't try to fix it. He didn't try to figure it out. He just said, "You're gonna have to go to court. You're gonna have to get out of my office and go to court. You're gonna have to go on and..." You're gonna have to go on and figure this stuff out your own way." But wow, that was a dramatic part, too, especially you think about them all being there when he gets there. And they're all dressed up nice, 'cause they're gonna impress him. And then he has to hear both their stories, but he quickly realizes, "I can't get involved in this, and I can't, I can't, you know, figure out what happened in the election, and I really don't know all the details of what y'all are accusing each other, and I can't throw the teacher out, and I don't even know if she kissed him," and, you know, all those things. So if you remember in the previous chapters that we've read, Jesse doesn't like the trustee, that whole the way that it's set up, the organizational chart, if you will, but the organizational way that the teachers and the trustees, and then the school board, and then the superintendent, how that's all set up, and the principals in there somewhere, if it's like at those high schools. He doesn't like how that's set up. He thinks the trustee should be removed. So this is just one more example where you know he's thinking there should be no trustees involved in those schools. It should just be the superintendent, the teachers, and the school board. You know, it should just be that. They shouldn't even be in the middle of it. And then when they are in the middle of it, this is the kind of stuff that happens. So you know that's what he was thinking. We did get one little inkling of there. He says something, I can't remember exactly, but he indicates later that year, whenever, when he decides not to accept. You know, in other words, he doesn't want his contract to be renewed. So there's just a little indication that he's not gonna stay in this position for long. I hope you enjoyed this part, really exciting. I don't, I don't know what, I guess the most, if I could have been like a fly on the wall, would have been when the Benton Dangerfield, he sounds like a really cool cat, cooled cat, if you will, that's what Pap would say. Although, you know, we did find out that he killed people for stealing his chickens, that part. So he was a really tough man, really hard man. But he had snuck around and really got all this information on Munner. So I guess I would have liked to have seen that part more than seeing him or Munner. I'd like to see those others and see them kind of with their mouth open, saying, "Oh, my goodness, what? What happened? How did this happen? And you've got proof?" And then interesting that, two things interesting. One is that they didn't press charges. Of course, they didn't have no money. They didn't have no money to get a lawyer and go and press charges against Munner. But then interesting that Munner stayed, you know, that he didn't just get up and walk out, since they knew that none of them would ever probably have any respect for him again, since they'd found out that he was doing actually what he was accusing Jesse of doing. He had actually done it, Jesse hadn't. And then also that he was getting his orders from somebody else. So in other words, he was not focused on helping Greenwood County. So really interesting play, or turn of events there, and then all those different factions. That's really fascinating to think about. That's humans. That's what happens when humans interact sometimes. That's what happens. But I hope you enjoyed this part. Please leave a comment and let me know what you thought about it. And I hope you drop back by next Friday, so we can see what Jesse, what happens next, see what happens to him next.